2017 Lincoln Way Community High School District 210. Would you please rise and be very able to pledge your belief?
Pledge your belief to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Glass. This is Doyle here. Mr. Lucetti.
Here.
Mr. Luwo.
Here.
Mr. Janik.
Here.
Mr. Kostic.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here. Public comment. One time does.
Over the past few years, this on.
Put the switch right now.
Over the past few years, any time an argument for improvement is made or mistakes are addressed, we, myself included, always defend it with, "You know our academics are stellar and they've never faltered, right?" And oftentimes that statement is followed up with giving the board and Dr. Tingley credit. Dr. Tingley, I think over the past few years, you have done a great job surrounding yourself with a good team in the district office. Brad, Kelly, Terran, and Dr. Ferry, just to name a few. But I think there is one deserving of special recognition and that is Dr. Riley. While at Christmas shopping, I came across a quote that said, "Teachers who love teaching teach children to love learning," and I cannot think of a man that describes more than Dr. Riley. Although our time with him is reaching its end, I believe his legacy will be lasting. Dr. Riley has a passion for teaching that manifests in every presentation he has made at these meetings. I don't know that I've seen anyone love their job as much as him. Dr. Riley understands that high school is so much more than the classes kids take. He's a critical part of each child's growth and he encourages every kid to explore and try new things. Every month, he presents the success of the students and he often gives them full credit and often Don plays his own role in their success. Dr. Riley has a passion for teaching, a love of kids, and a love for his job. He is a true gift to Lincoln Way. So tonight, as we take a minute to reflect on our successes this past year, I hope everyone can take a minute to thank Dr. Riley for creating an environment of learning that we can all be proud of.
Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the items listed. Approval of minutes from the November 16th meeting. Approval of closed session minutes from November 16th. Approved payroll of November 20 and December 5. Approval of the District 210 Advisory Minutes from October 16th. Out-of-state travel requests. Does anyone wish to have any of these items pulled and discussed separately? If not, I'll undertake a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Vote is open. Should be. Let's try that again. The vote is open. The vote will verbal talk. Thank you. The vote is unanimous and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda are the action items. Presentation of invoices for November 2017.
Motion to approve the invoices in the amount of $1,842,206.36 dated December 14, 2017.
Okay, there is a motion by a member of Lucetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the invoices? Hearing none, call for a vote.
I'm sorry. We'll do a verbal vote on this. Ms. Janice Doyle. Mr. Lucetti.
Aye.
Mr. Luwo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye, thank you. Next is the treasurer's report. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report as found in your board document?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Open for discussion. Questions of the treasurer's report.
I start on, I guess, cash flow reports are part of it.
Yes.
So on the cash flow report, just jumping to January, we still have the land sale. Maybe this is another item that we'll be discussing later, but do we still feel or do we have an update on the closing of that sale?
Yes, very positive conversations this week. Our attorney Chris Petraka spoke with the vice president at Woodman's. They're still moving right along. They, we don't necessarily anticipate the January close, but they'll certainly want to get a shovel in the ground as the ground thogs. I talked with Dr. Cobain in Village Timely Park. They've already received the updated blueprints. The first had five outlots. The second, as we discussed this last extension because of the pipeline and the complaints, the store has now moved out towards 191st. And so therefore the outlots have been removed, but they've already spent the money for the engineering to come back with the second plan in that short a timeframe. So at this point, everything is moving along well. However, I don't anticipate a January close and that's something we discussed. Moving it back to May 1st in the cash flow for next month, that'll also give us a little bit more time to see exactly where everyone is, but that's the anticipation is to move back to May 1st and see how it's all going.
So what does that do for the TAW draw for January?
Well, we would need to increase that TAW draw by approximately $2 million that we were going to be transferring of the land sale to the education fund. So it's just going to up the amount we're going to have outstanding by that $2 million.
So will you update the cash flow then to get that redistributed? Because then obviously if we pump that to May, that could eliminate the May draw altogether.
On the, I had another question that was on the cash flow. So on the, that last financial report, the estimated estimate of the final revenue. So this is, I'm assuming showing where we originally budgeted on revenue and where we now stand, we're showing about an increase of $900,000. Can you just walk through some of those significant changes there?
Certainly. So the report is referring as the one titled Estimated Final Revenue Through Fiscal Year 18. First item on it is tax levy, which you will notice we're anticipating receiving $413,000 less than we had budgeted. That is attributed to our new growth. We had estimated at 68 million in the budget, but we're actually going to early estimates from the treasurer. Will County is 51 million, so that's the major adjustment there. Second item is our corporate personal replacement tax. We're showing that should estimate a decrease of about 68,000. And that's just based from the Department of Revenue, just lagging collections and other things to do with corporate taxes. Finally, interest income. Our best estimate at this point is we should exceed our revenue budget by about 90,000. And that's mainly due to the fact that interest income, interest investment rates have almost doubled in the last little bit and we've certainly put the money, more of it, to work. Finally, the next item would be our elementary, the next change item anyway, no change anticipated to admissions or student fees. Elementary transportation payments, worked with Mike from Transportation, we're expecting that payment, those payments to be down about 300,000 due to lots of expenditures occurring within those elementary, five to elementary districts. No change to food service at this point. Other local, we're anticipate, well, not anticipate, we already know, we're going to be 417,000 over. And that's just to do with the fact that we received the insurance reimbursement on the central high school boiler and we had not budgeted for that in the past. Finally, on evidence-based funding, we know we've been notified by the state while they're still working through the formula, we have been, you will be receiving what they call the base minimum funding. And we know that that is going to be $1.3 million more than we had previously budgeted. Finally, transfer to state transportation aid. We received notification from the state that they'll be prorating that by 10%, 90% prorating. And so we're expected to lose 124,000 on that. So finally, no change to other or federal, resulting in a total of 935,000 increase over our budget.
So just on the transportation payments, there's an offset in expenses.
Correct.
All the other decline don't really have an offset. The transportation aid with that, is that just Lincoln Way's portion or is that, is that, some of that been picked up by the elementary school districts?
No, this is just, I mean, the elementaries would be experiencing the same thing because this proration is statewide, but this is just a portion of state aid related to our expenditures.
So the majority of this should fall, in the previous report, treasurer's report, we didn't have any, we're still in line with what we were expecting from expenditure side. Majority of this should fall then just to our operating surplus.
Correct. Correct.
Brad, to the best of your knowledge, so transportation, elementary transportation, that volume would be, does that have less activity or?
You know, I would need to, I just asked Mike to re-estimate that for me. I could certainly follow up and get the details of his estimates, so.
You would anticipate that it's probably going to continue out through the rest of the fiscal year?
Yeah, well, he estimated out to the end of the year. And like Mr. Lucetti brought up, this is a, you know, in-out, you know, we make the expenditure and then we immediately bill right out for it. And he's just anticipating that's where we'd be in comparison to what was initially budgeted. Now remember, this is off a budgeted number. We had, let's see, looking at that, oh, we had, so anyway, so he, where he felt like the 6.5 million would be the, for the five-year district's expenditures, which we'd be then billing out for.
Okay. Make sure I understood that.
This, the increase in evidence-based funding, I know the methodology is, methodology has changed, but does this include getting the payments that we were owed the previous year and just the payments we were expecting this year or everything that we were expecting for 2018 plus the previous money that was owed by the state?
Well, it's, so here's how it is. Let me just, so the good news is with how the evidence-based funding fell together, you know, that took the old general state aid formula plus four other categoricals that the state was way behind on, right? So it took those, crunched them into a new formula, evidence-based, but it's then being paid at the same two times per month as the old general state aid was. So the, one of the reasons why we're getting more than our budget is, it's really twofold. One is because the minimum is a little higher, but the other is, we had planned to get, the state was behind on payments, so we only planned to get four of the six they owed us. Well, now on these one-line items, we're going to get all six. And we know that's going to happen because it's being paid to us five, or everything, twice a month. So, so we know we're going to get that. So now to answer your next question, so the remaining things left on the old mandatory categorical payments, we're still only projecting to get two payments from last fiscal year and two payments from this fiscal year. We anticipate they'll still owe us for two payments by the close of the fiscal year.
Anybody else have any other questions? There are none. We have a motion in the second. Call for a vote.
Vote is open. The vote is unanimous. The motion passes.
Next on the agenda is student activities report for November 2017. I'll undertake a motion to accept the report as presented in your package.
So moved.
Motion, second. We have a motion, no second.
Thank you.
All right, discuss.
There were two accounts that were in the negative. Football East of $301, that's been corrected, and then Class of 2019 East, $3,751, that was a prompt deposit and obviously that'll be made after our ticket sales. We're requesting three new accounts. Marching Band Rose Bowl fundraising, that is to create a separate account to be open and manage the significant fundraising proceeds for the Rose Bowl Parade so they're not co-mingled with the regular marching band account balance. Annual Volunteer Club at Central and then Black Student Union at East. We would ask the board to approve this report as presented.
Any questions regarding the specific report? Now we have a motion, a second. Call for a vote, please.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. It's unanimous, the motion passed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, personnel reports, employment.
Under employment, Carol Bluck has accepted the position of World Language Chair at Lincoln Way East High School. Amy Figarel has accepted the position of World Language Chair Person at Lincoln Way West High School. Dave Gallagher has accepted the position of Social Science Chair at Lincoln Way West High School. Matt Murray has accepted a position as a mechanic in our transportation center. Laura Senna has accepted the position of World Language Chair at Lincoln Way Central High School. Jean Schaefer has accepted the position of Pupil Personnel Services Director for Lincoln Way East High School. Jeanette Slager has accepted the position of Bus Driver. And Lisa Yano has accepted the position of English Department Chairperson at Lincoln Way Central High School. I ask the board to approve these, the employment report as presented.
We have a motion to accept the employment presented by Rob. So, motion second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any additional discussion? Harry Mann, call for a vote, please.
Vote is open. The vote is unanimous and the motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is retirement.
Under retirements, Tina Borgo, Principal Secretary at Lincoln Way West High School, request to retire effective June 30, 2018. Monica Schmidt, Principal, Lincoln Way West High School, request to retire under Board Option A at the end of the 2021-2022 school year. Rich Taylor, Bus Driver, Transportation, has requested retire under IMRF Retirement System effective December 31, 2017. And Don Young, Mathematics Teacher, Lincoln Way's High School, request to retire under Board Option A at the end of the 2021-2022 school year. I ask the board to approve these, the retirement report as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the retirement report as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Harry Mann, call for a vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, personnel reports, resignations, leaves and others.
All right. Under resignations, Eadene Leonard, Insurance Benefits Coordinator for Lincoln Way Community High School, has resigned effective December 11, 2017. Amy Martin, Paraprofessional, has resigned as of December 1, 2017. And Martin Stanley, Bus Driver, has resigned as of December 5, 2017. Under leaves, Jacqueline Broadhurst, Teacher, Mathematics Department at Lincoln Way Central High School, is asking for a 12-day FMLA at the conclusion of her maternity leave. Sarah Coriak, Teacher, Special Services, Lincoln Way Central High School, has requested a five-week FMLA at the conclusion of her maternity leave. And Ann Shanahan, Assistant Principal, Lincoln Way West High School, has requested a 12-week FMLA. I ask the board to approve these, the personnel report as presented.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation leaves and other personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion regarding the report? Harry Mann, call for a vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you, Rob. Next on the action items, policy, second reading.
Before we ask for a motion, if I can refer everyone to Policy Number 465, I believe it's the second to have on the bottom there. It's a responsible bidder ordinance. I would ask that the board consider an amendment to Point Number Six. For construction projects over 25,000, the bidder must provide an apprenticeship and training program that is registered with the United States Permanent Laborers Bureau of Apprenticeship and Training or is reasonably equivalent to such programs. The district, or the administration would ask that we increase that 25,000 to 125,000 and that's something we can revisit over time. That would encompass our larger projects such as roofs, such as parking lots, the paving. Obviously, the boiler project would have exceeded this amount. The 25,000 is quite a bit lower threshold, so I would just ask for that consideration and then this is something that we can certainly revisit. If the board would like more time to deliberate, we can pull 465 off and bring that back to January as we will not be bringing any bids forward to the board until February and March. So it's open to consideration from the board.
Do we lose a lot of vendors that we possibly did that we jumped business with because that $25,000 threshold?
Chris, we don't know. We don't know. And that's why, discussing with Brad, we felt a little bit better to go higher on the threshold because that encompasses our, that would encompass the larger projects. And I do think, you know, putting something, putting a, putting an ordinance in place like this, a number of municipalities do have their, the responsible thing to do. The question of what, what would that threshold potentially do to price would be the question.
You know, the districts are doing, and this kind of policy?
There are some districts that have higher thresholds, some are at 25. This is modeled after Will County, which is in the 25,000 threshold. Some districts don't have this policy.
Right.
This is just, this isn't changing anything in bidding or, this is strictly just.
I guess they don't have it, right?
It's hard to make, I mean, I just, I don't know. I don't know that, I don't know the, to be honest, I mean, I just don't know.
The deliverables tomorrow. Does that affect other policies or other ordinances?
Well, it's just a matter of, I don't know if we can figure out, I mean, Chris's question is a good one on, is it limiting the level of, of vendors?
It could potentially some of the lower projects.
Some of the small projects, right?
The bigger projects are probably going to be.
These are often defensive.
Most are.
Most.
Most of them have it.
Yeah.
They mostly do.
I mean, the bigger, I mean, paving, I mean, you're going to be over $25,000, a couple $5,000 to millions. And you're going to be having larger companies that, a lot of apprentice programs training for, fitting in those projects anyway.
What construction projects do we have between, I mean, how many do we have between like 25 and 125 million?
Well, most of the things could be the 25-ish range. Those are just going to be our ongoing repairs and maintenance kind of things. You know, since construction projects, that's a, that's a pretty broad term. So now if we're redoing something for $35,000, putting in new, you know, tiling, for example, we have to verify that the tiling vendor has some kind of apprentice program. You know, it'd be these minor onesie-doosie jobs that wouldn't even, you know, 25,000, that's below the bid threshold, so we wouldn't even be going through formal documentation and bidding, we'd just be going through the quoting process. So now we're just adding to those things, a layer to make sure that who we're getting the quote from has this other piece in there. By raising it up, we're going to be above the bidding threshold, so now we'll just incorporate it into the, write into the bidding documents and it just makes it a little more seamless for us to make sure that they're, you know, meeting all those, wrap those policies and procedures.
Are you making a motion to amend it to the one? What makes more perfect sense?
The 125.
Okay.
I can imagine like the two-man operation doing some tiling, not having the ability to train the program.
So here's all we have to do. We just have to, that's an amendment that we've amended, and we just make a motion to approve the policies for second reading.
Subject to the amendments.
Subject to the amendment. And then a second, and any discussion on the other policy.
We'll leave your concurrence, I will, we have a motion today.
Sure.
Remember Doyle, a second, remember that. Any additional discussion?
Scott, is there anything that you would want to bring to our attention in terms of the other policies that, that would affect the district?
Once again, minor, minor impact notes.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Do we have a, call for a vote?
Vote is open. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Next is the action item format that Shop Towel Service did.
Go ahead. Brad, you want to talk about it first?
Certainly we can. So our contract, three-year contract was coming up for our format within the building and shop towels down to the transportation. So we put together bid specs, went out to bid, and we're going asking for a two-and-a-half year contract because we want to come back in and line up on the fiscal year, so it makes it better fitting within our budget, et cetera. So anyway, we went out to bid. We had two bids from Airmark and Cintas, and we're recommending, we've expected the product. They brought samples, Rich and I looked at them, they looked fine, so we recommend we go ahead and have the board prove, or the board prove it as presented.
Both of those were for two and a half years?
Yeah. Right, so I mean, I'm sorry, go on. I mean, we are looking at about approximately 57% reduction in our cost, so we're recommending approving for $48,804 for the two-and-a-half year contract.
This company's been around a while? I'm sorry. This company, they've been around? It seems like a little bit. I just want to make sure they're going to be here next year.
Right, right. Certainly, they've been around for a long time. We actually use this company for our maintenance staff uniform, so we already have a working relationship with them. We haven't been using them for Matt's service, but we've met with them. They're very reputable. We feel very comfortable moving ahead. uh, we feel very comfortable moving ahead.
My two-and-a-half years?
Right now, the bid expires December thirty-first, so we want to come line up with fiscal year, so we'll go two-and-a-half, so they'll expire at the end of, uh, June thirtieth, so just lining up with the budget year. And, I mean, and it also helps if the buildings are empty and the change, I mean, it's a busy time at Christmas, Friday, change over, change vendors and all that, so.
What are they doing, just taking, switching formats out of the, usually weekly?
Any other questions? I undertake a motion to accept the lower man, lower man shop towel service bid as recommended.
So moved.
Motion a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, please.
Vote is open. Vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. Final action item is the second amendment to the land sale agreement.
Attached is a proposed amendment from Woodlands in relation to our real estate contract. The essential purpose of the amendment is to provide for a revision to the legal description. The legal description contains dedication for road purposes and is treated like an easement in Illinois, rather than a deed of convenience or conveyance like Wisconsin. Woodlands wants to remove the dedicated land from the legal description of property which is desirable for tax and other reasons. Therefore, Woodlands is requesting that the district, that the district to deed that land that is dedicated for road purposes to the appropriate government, governmental entity, which would be ten to five. Um, depending upon how the approval process goes through with the village, we may have to be in the need to donate more properties such as a turn lane, but it would not change the purchase price of the contract. Our attorney has reviewed such document, he has no issues with the document. Um, as I stated, things seem to be moving really nicely, and we want to keep it all going at this point, so I recommend we accept this amendment as presented.
So moved.
A motion, second. Any discussion?
Has this been discussed with the department?
Yes.
They don't?
Yes. They're agreeable, and so basically what that means, if there are any repairs or changes, they would be the ones to do those rather than Woodlands, and I guess I talked to their economic developer this week.
Any other questions? Can you divert a shovel like that, why? Call for a vote?
Vote is open. Vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. Our action items. Next on the agenda, informational items. Which one of us, the Lincoln Way Specializations District, eight forty-three?
I attended that meeting, and it was business as usual, relatively short. The seven hundred and sixty-three thousand that was allocated from the state to come back to co-op has been coming in, uh, as was decided, we'll do it at the true up in January, and then at the end of the year. By giving all the money back now, the problem that comes in, since it's a cooperative and not a, a taxing body, we can't, uh, use pause or borrow money if we need it throughout the school year, we have to come back to the cooperative districts and ask for more money. So instead of having money coming in and coming out, which is going to be twice a year, is what's been decided between the business managers and the, uh, co-op. So all is good, we're healthy there. That concludes my report.
Any questions?
Or requests are listed in your backup materials for review, and you send employer requests this past month.
Any questions on the employer? Next is, uh, district lieutenant budget.
Uh, I attended that meeting on Monday, we continued our discussions about student activity, uh, and athletic fees. Um, the group overwhelmingly, um, kind of changed their vote for the board to reconsider that, um, it would be a one-time fee for all students, uh, that would be held at registration. That was their recommendation. Instead of paying per sport, per activity, it would be a one-time fee, um, instead of having to continue to collect it over the semester, um, for each, you know, season or two months.
When you said per student, you mean everybody? We got us third in the next year.
Yeah. Oh, everyone unanimously said that they wanted the fees, that they thought that fees were a good idea. And then we talked about when should they be instituted, what, you know, on the hardware caps, things like that limits, and, um, across the board, everyone, that was their parents, students, and everyone said there will be a fee that would be much easier to pay the fee if it was for everyone, and if it was something that we, uh, you know, put into the registration packet.
And that would be brought forward in the minutes, the next meeting, so that there, you know, that would be a board discussion and decision. Fee, student fee time, which will be presented on February, or March, when we look to lock those down.
Could you mention something like the collection and the timing and things like that, that it was a little bit?
It, it was cumbersome. It's doable, cumbersome. It was interesting, the parents in the group said they would rather pay one time, beginning of the year, registration and be done.
And even if their student was not involved in a sport or activity, they thought maybe it might give them an incentive to become involved in a sport or activity.
Is this a one fee or is it tiered?
A one fee, across the board, for other one activities.
Fifty dollars was kind of the amount that was.
Yeah, what was the amount?
About fifty dollars, which would be, uh, subtracting free reduced, would, would be right around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in addition to that. Quite of what we would get this year.
I don't know if fifty dollars would make a freshman decide to get involved in activity if they're not already participating in something.
But that'll be a, you know, that'll be a board discussion.
Yeah, and so, I mean, they've either quit, you know, it's just what they.
How many people are they?
We had about sixteen, including the student.
Teachers are around, how many do we have?
They had like eighteen.
Sixteen, eighteen, about eighteen, yeah, about eighteen.
Incredibly, the hands went up for, yes, for fees, and all the hands went up for across the board, and all the hands went up, and it was a short meeting.
What was your name's fees? What was your name's to assesses? How many of our students are in that? We, we can give those for you. We're, we're seventy-something are in something, seventy, seventy percent are in something, at least around this last year. Apparently, it was thirty percent.
Yeah. Again, it's for discussion, just, you know.
I'll take that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next, proposed project calendar for fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Brad, you had two additions?
Yes, well, three is actual items, but, um, at the last meeting, we presented the proposed fiscal year nineteen calendar, and it was suggested that we include in the budget calendar, the, uh, maintenance capital projects and how that would flow into this. So you'll see, three items have been added, February fifteenth, March fifteenth, and October fourth, uh, which we would be reviewing the capital improvement plan for maintenance, and then, and then also including the five-year financial update at that same time on that October fourth. So with that, take any other fee that the, the board may provide, we will get this, uh, planned on.
So, I think it would be helpful on here, where we have a discussion at the, um, March meeting, where we're talking about five-year forecasts and establish the budget parameters, but then we don't come back to the board, you know, there's a lot of work being shown here on developing the budget and compiling attendant budget, et cetera, but I think, you know, before fiscal year starts, so the May or the June meeting, I think we should, we should get an update at the board on how the budget's progressing. I just think that's a long gap in here. I think this is great to have this, you know, uh, itemized and how we're going to come back and have a plan, but I just think we should add in one more board update.
Okay, that's great. We can add a touch base point with the board, I'd recommend you come back in that May meeting then, with a touch base of where we're at, how the process is going, and stuff to update the board on how, how we're, how things are moving along. So I will add that and have that ready for next meeting.
Anybody else make an addition?
Again, I, Brad, I appreciate your work on this, I know we've been kind of nitpicking with you on some of these dates, and I think this makes that process more available, it's more to do to the board, but then as it comes to the board, it becomes part of board docs, and everybody's going to get a look at this as you're developing it, because I know you're going to do a great job, but it's just, and it makes me sleep a little easier at night.
Well, I had to do it.
And I know it's extra work for you, I get it, but I appreciate your effort, thank you.
Next, building and grounds report.
Included in the backup materials is the building and grounds operations business report, Mr. Bookies here, as well as Brad, if anyone has any questions concerning the report.
Audit findings.
Included in the backup materials are the audit findings, uh, we discussed them at the last meeting, uh, this will be an ongoing item, and informational items that we progress throughout the year. Um, Brad has had one scheduled training already with all business office employees. Um, it's something that will, will continue to be ongoing to address some of their concerns with the fraud risk prevention, uh, following the IPM manual, so we've already had one training, I, I shared the manual that Brad has shared with the, with the support staff, and that will be some help in training that we continue to invoke. Anything to add to that, Brad?
Uh, no, just the training went very well, and, and I'm just very pleased with how the staff is responding, and, um, actually really embracing this and moving forward, so we're definitely on the right track.
Thank you.
Is there a point where we, where we have things that are resolved, that we'll think this, you know, just take them off?
We'll continue to discuss those, there's nothing to add at this point in terms of resolution of everything that's on there.
Right.
But we'll continue to discuss as, as we go through the fiscal year this year. So you'll see that everything that was resolved was listed resolved.
Right.
And then all of the ongoing description of what the board is doing to address those, and so we'll continue to report out on those through the year.
So the plan would be, Chris, that starting with the January meeting, with the board details, Brad, just the, the meetings, and then if there's an item that, or if there's definitive action on it, you'll share that.
Community relations report.
Fright sheet is included in your backup materials for your review, um, I know you already worked in the packet, but it's certainly some very important information in there, and I'm very proud of the accomplishments of our students, and we'll just go to the next item in the interest of time, but all, all high schools are represented.
Asset of the month.
Asset of the month, the month of January, is creative activities in personal plans and using personal time effectively. We don't complain about practice noise, we have one of those recorders in my house right now, so I know what that's like. At school, provide free access to instrument, art materials, and lessons for students who can afford them. In other community, you can use local talent, X-community functions, I think our community does an excellent job of that.
Legislative report.
Nothing to report at this time.
Superintendent's report.
Another thing I have to add in superintendent's report, um, Brad and I met with Mr. Waler, I don't know the timeline, I think it might have been Monday of this week, to go over some enrollment projections, uh, using the cohort method, we will have those reports and, and a synopsis in your materials for the January meeting. Um, we continue to anticipate a slight decline in enrollment, but, uh, certainly a little different way to look at things, but we will provide that report for discussion in January.
Okay, thank you. Others, district business, anyone? Obviously, we were missing, we didn't get to this meeting, and I congratulate you and the coaching staff and everyone at the Lincoln Ways, Lincoln Ways, you know, that was an amazing run, not that the other two schools didn't have amazing runs as well, but that was fun to watch, and, and several of those were in Decal when it happened, and it was just, it was euphoric, so, um, way to go, everyone, it was awesome. Alright, um, next, we will move into the strategic planning session. Scott, you wanted to come up a little bit about the logistics.
Logistically, obviously, like last time, Dr. Madone will open up.